...love to all the other board members. Dave has had an operation on his shoulder and is recuperating from that and will not be here with us this evening. The first course of business will be the, if somebody would make a motion, you have the minutes from the last meeting in front of you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right. You got that? Okay. Kelly? John, you talked about a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I think that we should contact the Selectmen to possibly retain the services of Town Council Moody for the remainder of our hearings, at least, on the 40B projects.
We have a second on that?
Second.
All approved? Motion approved. Kelly, will you send that letter for us to the Selectmen?
Sure.
Okay. All right, that's our business. We're just gonna wait till 7:05 to start the first hearing. Thank you. The other members will be on this one. This is the application of Eversource Energy, GZA Geo-Environmental Incorporated, 249 Vanderbilt Ave., Norwood, Mass., for special permit relief pursuant to the requirements of Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in order to utilize the property at 11 Beach Street and 18 Pond Street, shown on Assessors Sheet 47 as parcels 167 and 702 as a contract de jad, primarily to be used for temporary materials and staging. In the application that we received, I will read some of the things here is, okay. Pursuant to what provisions of the zoning bylaw do you seek a special permit and for what purposes? Article 7, Water Resource Protection District, Section 7.5 Use Regulation, Contractor De Jad. The proposed use of the property is regionally important to Eversource to improve, to support gas operations in Milford and central Massachusetts. The special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. A contractor, this is their reasoning, a contractor de jad is considered a permitted use in a central industrial IA zone where the site is located. The use of property as a contractor de jad is allowed by special permit in the WRPD WR1, provided the proposed use meets the standards set forth in Section 7.5.4 of the bylaw. The proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. But the applicant states is that the site is only accessed by relatively few Eversource employees or their agents, contractors, and is only accessible, and is only accessible through a secured entrance. Vehicles enter the premises on an intermittent basis to drop off or pick up materials. There is no sidewalk or other means of pedestrian access egress into the site. Pedestrian walkways along B Street will not be affected. The other thing is the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The applicant states that the use of the site as materials management and staging yard does not create a nuisance or hazard because it is only an intermittent use with minimal additional traffic and no additional sources of physical or noise pollution. Okay. Now, we have received information from the Planning Board on this particular application, and it was dated on February 6th. Dear board members, the Planning Board reviewed the petition listed above at their regularly scheduled meeting held on February 6, 2018, and recommends the following favorable. They asked us to refer to the attached letter from the town planning, and this is from Larry Duncan and dated February 6. Dear Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests ZBA special permit approved to allow for the continued operation of a contractor de jad on the subject property. Subs whose are allowed only by special permit within the WR-1 Water Resource Protection District. The site was the location of a former coal gasification plant that operated in the late 1800s to the 1930s. The buildings have been removed and the contaminated soils have gone through remediation. In addition, the applicant received a negative determination of the applicability from the Conservation Commission on 9/21/70. Most recently, the site has been used for material storage. Receiving approval for this special permit would bring the current operation into zoning compliance. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. Kelly, have you put out the signatures for everybody?
Okay.
Okay. And so what we proceed here is we'll let the applicant proceed to tell us what they're trying to do here, and then after that is done, the board members will have an opportunity to ask any questions, and then it'll be open to the audience to ask whatever questions they might have on that. So you can tell us who you are and how you're representing the applicant.
Sure, my name is Michelle Seminow.
Oh, okay. Late arrival. And Michelle, you can grab the microphone if you want, or sit by it. Whatever's more comfortable for you, you can pull it right out if you want.
Okay, sure. Is it okay if I stand up? I do have a poster presentation?
Yeah, and you can put that right up here on the board. Yep. And there's another microphone up there for you, so you're all set.
Okay.
Just take your time.
My name is Michelle Seminow. I'm with GZA Geo-Environmental. I'm a professional wetland scientist, and this is Matt Waldrop from, representing Eversource. So just to kind of get you oriented to the site, there are actually two properties in the book.
Do you mind putting it up on the board so everybody in the audience can take a look at it, sorry? And just talk into the micro, there's pins up there. Maybe your assistant can help you. He's in a tall.
I can just hold it.
Yeah, there you go. And talk into the mic, and we all can hear you.
Will do. There we go. Okay, so just to get you oriented, we've got Beach Street here, Pond Street over here. The Charles River is to the south of the site, and there are actually two properties involved in this site. One is 11 Beach Street, which is here. It's actually the access and egress to the site currently. And then in back here, we have 18 Pond Street. Both of these properties are in the care and control and ownership of Eversource, and there's currently only one access to the site. It is an open gravel lot. As you said, it was the former manufactured gas plant facility, which has since been cleaned up. And what we're proposing to do here, there are actually four existing material bays that Eversource uses for its gas operations, and it's a critical facility, based on where it's located, for gas operations, especially under emergency conditions. The four bays, actually, if I could just grab my notes.
Go right ahead.
The four bays, bay number one consists of sand. Bay number two is gravel, which is used for backfilling and compaction of excavations. Bay three is currently used to store broken asphalt from trenches and roadways and boulders from excavations. And bay number four is excess pipe fittings and scrap metal. Now, these bays are comprised of two stacked modular, two-by-foot, two-foot by two-foot modular concrete blocks, so that's what forms the bay. There's not like a structure or footings or a building or anything there. It's just these modular blocks that contain the material. The material is well-contained within these blocks, and Eversource just comes in and manages the material, takes it away as needed for backfill, or places it as needed for storage for another site. And so that's what's existing. There's also a storage container that's currently just used for sundry tools, non-motorized type of tools, and pipe fittings and things like that. No liquids or hazardous materials or anything stored in there currently. So what we're proposing to do is to keep these four bays as is, under, if you would grant us a specialties permit to do so, and then in the future, Eversource would like the right, actually, if we could flip it over to the proposed conditions, to add three additional material storage bays for very similar purposes, just to store certain materials, pipe fittings, backfill, gravel, things like that, and also add up to one storage trailer of the same size and shape and general location as the existing one. And that is pretty much the project. That's what we're proposing. We are in a Water Resource Protection District WR1, which is why we're here tonight for the special use permit. And as you said, we did receive a negative determination from the Conservation Commission as we're in the riverfront area and a little bit in the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay. All right. Board members, I'll start down. Tim, do you have any?
For what reason did they give you the negative determination? Was there a special?
Well, it's in the 200-foot riverfront area, and with this project, it's just, you know, there wasn't any proposed grading, there was no soil disturbance, there was no construction of any kind, and so the negative determination of applicability tells us that the Conservation Commission was not concerned about further alteration or impact to the riverfront area or the 100-foot buffer zone. There's really no chance of, you know, sedimentation or runoff. We didn't have to clear any vegetation for this project. It's open gravel. Like we said, it's, you know, a former remediation site, and the fact is, the site is actually somewhat limited as to what it can be used for.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
No questions. Okay. The one question I have is that if you look at our zoning map, you can notice that the bottom, as you get onto B Street and as you move down, part of the property there on Beach Street is in the RA district. I don't know if you noted that.
RA district.
RA, yeah.
What is the acronym? R-A?
Well.
Residential.
Yeah. Residential A. So the point is this, is that we would probably want to put a restriction on it that in no way can you, you have joint property there, but you cannot infringe on the RA zone, because it's not allowed to do that with a contractor de jad. Okay? And you'd have to take a look at the zoning map and talk to the town planner to make sure that that infringement would not occur. Are you okay with that restriction?
Yes, I'm just, I'm unclear to where that area is.
Yeah.
Well, here, come here.
We have a map in here.
Here. Okay. All right, let's go. All right. I'm looking at backwards, but let me put it first here so we can see it. Okay. All right. Where are we, Charles? Here. All right, here we are. Okay, so here's Pond Street right here, and this is where your locus is, right in here. Okay? Now here's Beach Street coming down. Okay? As you can see, at a certain point, B Street now becomes RA, so there cannot be any infringement into that area, which there probably won't be, but we'll put that restriction.
I'm just wondering where, Michelle, do you remember where that, there is a chain link fence separating the two parcels. I wonder if that's right in this area for that reason?
Yes, that could be. We can definitely check that out.
We do have a, we do have a chain link fence that separates both the properties, actually.
Right here.
And we wouldn't, we wouldn't do anything.
Yeah.
Over in this area. And the reason, actually, one question the Conservation Commission asked us is why we piled all of this, or why we set up the bays closer to the wetlands, and the main reason we did that was to keep it away from any residences on the other side.
Right. And so, in any case, what you'd have to do if we were to permit this and we were to put that restriction that you cannot infringe on any RA district on Beach Street, you'd just have to make sure you know where that is and default that. Okay? You can do that with the town planner, and they would take you through.
These are store.
Now, as far as drainage, no, the drainage is gonna stay just as it is right now?
Yes, sir.
And I don't mean that negatively. I'm just saying, is there, is this gonna be natural runoff the way the property's been running off for years?
That's, well, that's correct. Maybe not for years, but back when the remediation was done in 2015, I believe that, the site was graded generally this way. It's a fairly flat site, anyway. There is a little stormwater swale right here. It's comprised of riprap, and there's not a lot of runoff on the site, anyway. The crushstone, you know, does a great deal to attenuate stormwater, and there's really no impervious surface left save these top of wall, which is flush, kind of flush with the ground, and then the base, the base structure itself and the trailer. That's the only impervious surface on the site. So, yes, sorry to answer your question, yes, stormwater is staying the same.
Okay. All right. I'll now open it to anybody in the audience who has any questions on this. Is anybody concerned with, would like?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, wanna come up here, introduce yourself, and be more than happy and.
I don't know if my other half of our hearing is on Pond Street.
Now, the thing is this, as you, we'll answer all your questions, but you gotta put them through the board, and we'll make sure they answer, and you can sit down, have a seat, and use our microphone.
I am James Prandrad. I live on 31 Pond Street. Been here since 1974. I see a lot of work done between Pond Street and B Street. You guys are talking about the old building. There was a gene, bean tube there one time. There was also electrical company outlet, they moved it out of the way. And these guys came in and cleaned up house, which they did a real good job. I'm very surprised they cleaned the soil up, but there's come concerns. One of them is traffic, when they do drop the stuff off, I see a lot of banging, and they chop up a lot of stuff, they're making a lot of noise. It's a timeframe, okay? I see them late at night, especially during the summer months. This is what most of the people are concerned of. Why are they banging, you know, they chop it up, put it in this area? You guys, these guys have been doing it almost, maybe almost close to two years after they cleaned up the land, and we're just getting a notice now? We don't understand that.
Well, what are you saying? Right now, what's happening is they're coming and asking this, as the town planner said. By us doing this, they will be back in, they will be now authorized to do it. I mean, obviously, maybe they'll permit you to come back sometime then, but now we're trying to rectify that, so that's the situation before us right now. So I don't know what happened back when.
All I know, they were doing this, and I thought everything got approved, we back, and then all of a sudden we got a notice why this is happening. Well, anyways, there's also a, I know you got the chain link fence, the place looks nice, I'm not criticizing that, but there is a drain off between Pond Street and B Street. There was, used to be the old swirl where Brook used to be. It's right between your land and where the limo land is. It's right in between a bunch of brush, so I'm concerned about the stuff going into that.
Back here?
Yeah. It's between Pond Street and the limo.
Sorry, what's limo?
Limo, limousine place.
Accent.
Accent.
I'm not exactly sure where that is, but I think you're referring to the area back here?
Well, where's, show me where Pond Street is.
Just pond, right here.
Okay. See that where that red line is? What's that? Is that a chain link fence?
Nope, that is the distance.
Okay, where's the chain link fence going to?
Chain fence is here.
Okay, it's a, I don't know how you read this map. What's that?
The limo's at the top.
The top, in that square?
Right, that square, yes.
Okay, right there, right between that, okay, right there.
There's another building, there's another building as a, on Pond Street.
I mean, this is the third area right here.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think we're all there.
Oh, okay.
That shows it's on, that shows it's on accent limousines property, though. It doesn't show, it doesn't show it's on their property.
I thought it was part of the town property, because the town used to clean that up.
This is the, this is the red line or whatever it looks like.
We just have that surveyed, so if there was a stormwater feature, our surveyors would have picked that up if it was on the land.
Doesn't look like, it looks like it's on accent limousine property.
So I think that might be right off the property.
Yeah, we did ask the surveyors, I think it's required, actually, it's part of the plan that we pick up any type of stormwater feature on the property.
So the answer to the question is, your question is?
About the runoff, that's all.
It looks like the runoff is on, not on this property, but it's on the limousine, yeah, limousine's property, yeah.
See, I don't even know that's limo, because they got a fence between the two areas. There's a, there's a town, you know, and I think it was kept there, that's all. I'm just kind of concerned about the runoff, that's all. But then, and the noise. Okay, the pounding, they do a lot of the pounding, chop up the bricks and stones. And the timeframe, it's late at night, and we just, you know, I don't know what the timeframe is.
Yeah, I can certainly, I'll certainly communicate that to the company. I know if it is late at night, typically that's when there's an emergency condition and they have to go out, and if there's a leak in main or a leak.
Well, I can understand that, but it's just, you know, they just been dropping it off, and next thing I know, the guy's out there all day, just chopping it up, putting it away, the trucks are coming in and out. I guess we're kinda concerned the noise. You know, it's just, it gets annoying after a while.
Do you have any ideas about the hours of operation?
I'd have to take that back to the company. I mean, the typical work hours are seven to three for our employees doing just routine, you know, main install or main relay work, but if it's emergency conditions, then they're out there as long as they need to be to get the main repaired, because that can be a safety issue if there's a leak in main.
So you're saying that you would be okay with saying that the hours of operation are between seven and three, and only during emergency times you would have somebody there working after those hours or before those hours?
I would say that's fair, correct. Sir, how often do you hear that?
Well, during the summer, they were just about, almost every day.
At night?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not sure what that would have.
It's, I don't know, you guys are just cleaning up, or making, getting the stuff ready together, nobody knows, nobody, oh, we heard dump trucks dropping big stones off, next thing we know, we're pounding, and it's mostly going most during the summer months.
And approximately how late would you say that?
I've seen it go around toward 8 o'clock at night.
Eight, okay.
Yeah, there are some circumstances where we would do non-emergency work at night if it's issues with traffic along the main road to avoid detours and impacts to the community during the day, during rush hour, stuff like that, so we would do that work at night.
Yeah.
I could, so I can, I can take that back to the company, but typically, the work is done during the day unless it's, unless there's some type of special arrangement.
How early, how, when you say early in the day, what, how early is early?
Usually they start around 7:00 AM.
Is that the normal time?
It depends on the town. A lot of towns have their own noise ordinances, and we have to abide by that, or we can start equipment, but typically it's around 7:00.
All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, I'll ask the board. Anybody wanna make a motion on this right now?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and what's that motion?
We should put some conditions on.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Hours of operation, seven to, is five reasonable?
You know, I hate to commit to it tonight, because I'm not on the gas side of the company. I, I just don't.
Well.
I, I mean, our intent is to, now, this would just be for regular operation?
Yeah.
For regular operation, yeah, not including emergency situations.
And would this include the circumstances where it's non-emergency, but there's been special arrangements made with the town to do the work at night to mitigate traffic impacts and stuff like that?
Well, it all depends. I mean, is that an every night, is that an, when those occurrences occur?
It's difficult to say. A lot of it depends on what, when the project comes up and where it is, and I couldn't project that at this time.
Well, I think what's gonna have to happen is that, you know, you're looking for the permit tonight, and I think we're gonna have to put conditions on it, that's what our board does, and I think your company will just have to be flexible enough to work within that framework, you know?
What are you, what are you doing at night? Are you hammering rock up at night?
There shouldn't be any, I wouldn't see any need for that, because if they were hammering it up, it would be to break it up to a point where they could dispose of it off-site, and the disposal facilities aren't open at night, so I wouldn't see any need to do that at night.
Are they running machines in the yard at night? What's, what's the purpose at night?
The only, the only reason that they would be in there at night would be if they were just doing, you know, bringing material in and out to support the project, as if they would be doing during the day.
Sir, are you hearing trucks, are you hearing machines, are you hearing?
Both, both. I can hear the trucks dumping big rocks off, and then next thing you know, you get the tractor trailers, I mean, the loaders dumping the rocks and banging them up, then putting them in the containers.
Okay, so.
If it's just a starting, they were just starting up, and maybe it'll get better a little later on, I can't tell you that, but it's been annoying.
Okay. All right. What we have here is a motion by John with some conditions. Do you want to state those conditions, John?
I would say normal hours of operation, based off what these people say is seven to three is working hours. I think we can be flexible enough to go maybe a couple over that.
Seven to five would be.
Seven to five, I would say.
So one condition is that the operations have to be limited to the hours of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, with exception for emergency situations, they need to get materials to provide safety to the public. Okay?
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
When you have an emergency situation, do you have a police detail? Like, if you're, if you're doing a water main or something, or a main at 1:00 in the morning, do you have the police detail there, so?
The town is always notified. I'm not sure about the police detail. If there's a situation where it would be on a main road and there'd be an impacted traffic, if we would have to block off part of the street, we would absolutely have a police detail there.
So how's the town notified, I guess, is what I'm asking?
It would be our, our gas company. We, this would be just, this yard would just be for gas operations, so you referenced, we don't do any water work.
Oh, okay. So if you have, so if you have, if you're opening the road up some street at 12 o'clock at night, who are you notifying, at the town?
That would be, well, our, it would be our gas company, and they would notify, typically it's the Board of Health. If it's at night, I'm, to be honest, sir, I'm not quite sure how, how that's done.
Okay.
I can, I can certainly find the answer and get that, get back to you on that.
Well, one would assume if you're gonna open up a road, that they would be contacting the police department and the highway department in those cases.
They, they may do that.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna make that assumption, you know, you know what assumptions do, but that's the way it's gonna be. All right, so that's the one restriction, is on the timing, and the other one that I would like to propose is that there can be no movement onto residential A section on Beach Street, and that the applicant must get that identified through the town planner to make sure that is well, well-established.
Okay.
That would be the second condition. Any other conditions? Okay. All of those, second that motion from John?
I'll second it.
All those approved?
Aye.
Aye? It's approved. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Everything's fine.
What's going on? You going to the vision?
I don't know. I don't know.
Straight out of.
Thanks.
This is on the application of Louis A. Rizzoli and Julie A. Rizzoli Richards of 25 Short Street, Milford, Mass., for a variance from the provisions of Section 2.4 and/or 2.5 of the zoning bylaws, as those requirements relate to a 19,913 square foot, more or less, possible land owned by the petitioners. The variance relief is sought to permit the division of the property into two lots, one lot to contain the existing residential structure and detached garage, and the new lot of 9,462 square feet to be available for single-family construction use. Okay, we have a lot of information here. I would look for a motion that we suspend with that and let Attorney Pettenari take us through that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, anybody second that?
Second.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Ernie Pettenari, and lawyer here in the town of Milford, currently between offices, but I think we all used to be located at 12 Main Street, right down the road.
Except, I'm sorry. One thing I should do, this is.
You wanna read the recommendations?
Yeah. Sorry. Apologize. Okay. We did receive a recommendation from the Planning Board dated February 6, 2018, and the Planning Board, Planning Board reviewed the petition listed above at their regularly scheduled meeting held on February 6, 2018, and recommends the following. Four in favorable, four are in favor with one unfavorable. And Larry Duncan has provided the Planning Board with his recommendations, and what Larry says is, dear Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests a lot area, lot width, and lot front variance to allow for the subdivision of the subject property to create a second building lot. The proposal would create a ten thousand four hundred and fifty-one square foot lot fronting on Short Street containing the existing house and nine thousand four hundred and sixty-two square feet lot fronting on Florence Street for future development. The existing nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen square foot lot is conforming as to area and contains a one single-family dwelling. The dwelling is non-conforming as to setbacks, however, there appear to be no conditions whatsoever relating to the land itself or to the surrounding that creates a hardship. Therefore, I recommend the board forward an unfavorable report to the zoning board of appeals due to the lack of hardship. Okay, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, I'm Ernie Pettenary, um, I was present at the planning board meeting the other evening, um, and Larry's recommendation was read aloud to the members of the planning board, and I think you captured the most important part of that evening, and that is four members of the planning board respectfully disagreed with Larry's, uh, recommendation, and I think I'm gonna be able to tell you why. Uh, first of all, in my company tonight is Louis Rizzoli, one of the owners of the property, his sister Julie Rizzoli Richards, and her husband Ernie Richards, and behind me, behind him, and they're here to answer any questions about the history of the lots, if you wanna hear anything about that. This property has been in their family since the Second World War or before. This property was bought by their father, and before he married his mother, he was already the owner of this property. They got married more than seventy-five years ago and always made their home here. Larry's point about the question of hardship is focused, I would respectfully submit, on the wrong part of the law. Larry is talking about the nature of the land as it is land, rather than looking at the lots as what they used to be. When Mr. and Mrs. Rizzoli acquired title to this property back in the forties, it was more than one lot already. There's no question, nobody's here to deny that it's been held in common ownership for more than seventy-five years, but what happened in this neighborhood is the zoning changed from eight thousand square feet to fifteen thousand square feet, and what would have been two conforming lots when Mr. Rizzoli bought these properties, became one lot that conforms to area, but doesn't conform to any of the other setback requirements. What happens to the house is, I think, of especial importance. The existing house is already as non-conforming as it's going to be if this variance is granted. It's non-conforming because it's situated at the dead end of Short Street, and it doesn't have a hundred and twenty feet on Short Street. It's non-conforming because it's too close to the front lot line, and it's too close to the southerly lot line. If this board grants this variance, none of that's going to change. The only thing that's going to change is that the Rizzolis would be entitled to develop this lot for single-family residential purposes, no duplex, and this lot would possess nine thousand four hundred and sixty-two square feet. The house that they could build on this lot would conform in every material respect to the zoning bylaw, except lot size and lot width, because on this lot line, it's eighty feet instead of a hundred. So respectfully, I think there is something unique about this property. This property is one of the many that we have seen over the last several years from that zoning district that are affected by a zone change, that have now rendered the prime purpose of these lots, the original objective of the owners of these lots, it has now rendered those objectives obsolete. They can't develop this property in the way they ordinarily would have developed it, and that is, we would respectfully submit, a hardship that is recognizable under the law. Just so there is no doubt as to the accuracy of what I'm representing this evening, as I typically do, I did some homework, and I looked at the abutters list. There's sixty-one residential lots that are identified as abutters to this property. Out of sixty-one lots, two possess more than fifteen thousand square feet in the RB zone. So that's one in thirty, or two in sixty-one, that have fifteen thousand square feet of work, and one of those is the locus of a four-family house, and the second is the locus of a duplex. So the suggestion that, in fact, this is something that is being done, that is not either consistent with the neighborhood, or which would be bad for the neighborhood or the town, is one that I flatly reject. Secondarily, of the remaining fifty-nine lots, there are, and I've gotta read it because I don't remember the exact number, there are less than, uh, fifteen, there are fourteen houses that are going to be bigger than either of these two lots. So the average lot size in this immediate area, as identified by the Board of Assessors on its list of abutters, the average lot size is way, way, way below eight thousand square feet. Not uncommon, not unexpected, because the original lots in this zoning district, when zoning went in, were eight thousand, and a lot of these houses are built on four and six thousand square foot lots. This proposal seeks to allow a ten thousand four hundred and fifty-one square foot lot to continue to be the, the locus of the Rizzoli family homestead where it's been for more than seventy-five years, and seeks your permission to authorize the construction of a conforming structure on a lot which conforms in terms of frontage, and which by anybody's imagination can only be viewed as originally being intended for separate residential use. That's the presentation, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the board, we're here to answer any questions you have, and we respectfully request your consideration.
All right, we'll start down with you, John, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
No questions.
Uh, the size of the, uh, buildable, uh, house setback box is, is what, what's the size of that, Ernie?
The size of it?
Yeah.
Bob, you know, you're going the wrong way for me, I know that it, it comports to all of the setback requirements, so it's gonna have a thirty-foot frontage setback off of Florence Street, fifteen on each side, and twenty-five from the rear lot line. I'd have to do some quick math, but if we're gonna go twenty-five here and thirty here, that's fifty-five, so that's gonna be about twenty-five square feet, twenty-five linear feet.
Five feet depth?
Depth, and if we're gonna go fifteen on either end, and it's a hundred and twenty, that's a big house.
Yeah, I was concerned about, about the depth, just, just being big, and I mean, nothing to do with really the variance, but, um, curious about that, okay, I'm fine.
Jim? Okay, and, um, obviously, the egress to that lot will be on Florence Street, correct?
Correct, it's gonna front on Florence Street, access to it from it is gonna be over Florence Street.
All right, and the, uh, who's living in the existing ho, uh, homestead now, is that right?
Mrs. Rizzoli just passed away a little while ago.
Right, I know that, yeah.
They're in the process of cleaning out and doing those kinds.
Okay, all right, fine. All right, now, is there anybody in the audience that has a question on this? Okay, with that, I'll entertain the motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll, uh, open the, uh, meeting on the application of Rosalind Pine, 130, 123 Congress Street, Milford, Mass. for a variance from the lot size and lot width provisions of Section 2.5 of the zoning bylaw, in relation to a parcel of land located on the Eastly side of Congress Street, known and numbered as 123 Congress Street, and shown on the assessment sheet 35 Block 22 Lot 5, and owned by the petitioner. The variance relief is sought in order to relocate an existing lot line between the two lots within the subject president's premise, resulting in a second new lot. And, um, right now, from the planning board, uh, reviewed the petition at their regularly scheduled meeting held on February 6, 2018, and recommends the following, three favorable, one unfavorable, one abstain, and, uh, they also requested we look at Larry Duncan's, uh, recommendation, and said, Dear Chairman, the applicant requests ZBA variance to allow for the relocation of a lot line between Lot 4 and Lot 5, two existing conforming lots currently under common ownership. The variance originally granted for this request in 2016 was not exercised and has therefore lapsed. The location of the house on Lot 5 does not meet the side yard setback requirements from the naughtily side property line. This variance will result in two lots, the new, northern lot 4 to be eleven thousand four hundred square feet in area and having ninety-five feet of width, fifteen thousand square feet of area, and a hundred feet of width required in the RB zone. I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals. Now, before we get started, Attorney Pettenary, we only have four members, so you have to get a majority, the major majority, yeah, okay, and you're willing to go along with?
I'm willing to go forward, and I'll explain why during my presentation.
Okay, uh, as, as I said before, Mr. Pettenary has done a, a nice job of putting it all together, and I think it would be, somebody make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the application, and let Mr. Pettenary take us through that.
So made, second.
Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am Ernie Pettenary, um, for those of you who remember this, and I know Mr. Walsh at least was here, and I'm not sure Mr. Capazella was here, but I was here on this same petition about twenty-three months ago. Um, it was in late 2016, and this board unanimously granted Mrs. Pine a variance to do what this petition seeks, but for a variety of reasons, she wasn't able to exercise the variance, and then discovered that the variance had in fact lapsed. In conversations with town council, we discussed the possibility of simply trying to do an extension to the variance, but we joke about the older we're getting, the more concerned we are with what we leave behind, and as I said to Jerry Moody, I didn't wanna have somebody fifteen years from now look at this and say, the title to this property might not be clear, because that variance was not exercised in a timely way. So after consultations with Jerry and consultations with Mrs. Pine, um, we decided the smart thing to do would be to come back before you and basically make the same presentation we made before. Mrs. Pine wanted to be here this evening, but really couldn't make it, her good friend and longtime associate of her husband George, Leo Jacobs, is here with me to, to support the petition on behalf of the family. The presentation is very much similar to the last presentation I just concluded, except these have always been two lots. They were originally two lots, they continued to be two lots, they were assessed as two lots, and taxes were paid on them for two lots. The problem arises because the subdivision of this lot will reduce this to non-conformity, and in order to give this extension of this house the correct depth and bearing that it deserves, it reduces the size of this lot to eleven thousand four hundred square feet. We're looking only to reinstate the terms of the last variance that was issued, which allowed the creation of this lot line, so as to create this lot with twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine square feet, and this lot with eleven thousand four hundred square feet with, is, which is deficient in terms of size, because it's a fifteen thousand square foot neighborhood, and is deficient in terms of frontage on this frontage, because it's only ninety-five feet. But the reason that the board was persuaded the last time that the exercise of its variance power was reasonable in this case, is the same reason that we just finished talking about down, in the case down the plains. If you look at the footnote in my memorandum, and again, this memorandum is word for word what I presented back in the fall of 2016 without, except for the notations that I've made on it, if you look at the footnote, it's on page three, the abutters list provided by the Milford assessors identifies thirty-three properties as abutting the subject premises. Two of those are condominium units, one is a multifamily property, and one is the school that's owned by the town of Milford. The ab, the abutters identified as single-family residential are twenty-nine, and if you go up to the middle of the first full paragraph on that page, it says, of the twenty-nine single-family residential properties identified by the town of Milford Assessor's Office as abutters, only five conform to the minimum lot area of fifteen thousand square feet. So the request we respectfully submitted in 2016, and we respectfully submit this evening, is a reasonable one, to utilize this lot in a manner consistent with the majority of the houses that are surrounding it, and which are identified by the town of Milford, uh, uh, Assessor's Office as abutters to the property. We think that it was a reasonable request then, we believe it's a reasonable request this evening, we're here to answer any questions you might have, but that would conclude my prepared remarks.
Okay. Ron, any questions?
No, no questions.
Question, Bob?
What, the original, there was an original lot line?
There had been, correct, and then.
Any idea where, and when?
I do know, um, it. The total parcel, Bob, comes to thirty-three thousand square feet, the total of both together.
Yeah.
The lot line originally would have been closer here to make this a conforming lot.
So in the middle then?
Yeah, they, they did it so that, as with the last presentation, this can be developed to conform to offset that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, anyone in the audience would like to speak on this? No, you're all set?
All set.
All right, uh, the chair will entertain a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, grant the variance.
Second.
Tim seconded it, all those in favor? Aye, granted.
Thank you, folks.
They hold you back.
So much grabbing paper.
Close the meeting, right?
Yep, and the meeting, uh, at this point, is closed.